Good evening, this is the April 16, 2019 meeting of the Planning Commission. It is 7:06 PM and I apologize that I'm late and we are starting late. Let's go ahead and start with roll call.
Chair Mason.
Here.
Vice Chair Legasse.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Lathene.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson is absent and excused from this meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Legasse, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge to the meetings, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We can start with the February 19, 2019 minutes. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions through the chair?
I believe I have one tiny correction. I just have to find it. Uh. Let's see. Oh, correction in the recusals, the announcement of conflict of interest, just my house is within 500 feet, a 500-foot radius of the 558 Hazel and not a 300-foot radius. Thanks.
Any other changes or suggestions? Does anybody want to motion for approval?
I make a motion that we approve the meetings of the Planning Commission of February 19, 2019.
Is anyone second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the approval carries. The second item is the March 19, 2019 approval of minutes. Any comments or questions on those? Do we have a motion?
Through the chair. A motion that we approve the minutes of March 19, 2019.
Okay, and is there a second from the commissioners?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Nope. So the approvals will carry. We'll move on to item number two, public comments on items not on the agenda. Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening commissioners, city staff. I'm Nwee Demin, San Bruno resident. And I just want to see if the city has any kind of a tool or website when it comes to looking up parcels that are affected by the FEMA flood maps. I know for, I, for example, have multiple parcels that are affected and it's very confusing to figure out which map, which flood map, which FEMA flood map to look at. And also, some of my neighbors, you know, since we're right next to, next to me in the neighborhood, have difficulty coming up with which flood map to look at, but it'd be easier if the city had some kind of a parcel where we can type in our parcel or actual address. That'd be great and if it's in the works, is there a timeline to when would that come out? Thank you.
Great, thank you. So public comment is generally not an opportunity for questions and answers, but I will ask if there is anything available on the website, do we know, just because the members here.
So there is not, but I can give you my card and we can follow up separately.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Nope. So we will move on. Is there any conflict, are there any conflicts tonight? No? No? Okay. So then we'll move on to the public hearings. So the first item for A, 659 Huntington Avenue. That's not only item tonight, actually.
Good evening, Chair Mason, members of the Planning Commission, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The project before you is 659 Huntington Avenue. It's a request for a use permit and architectural review permit to allow the construction of exterior architectural improvements in a 1911 square foot first and second story addition at the north end of the building. This addition would enlarge the existing kitchen and add storage area for the existing restaurant associated with the Artichoke Joe's Casino. The 2.8 acre site is triangular shaped and bounded by San Mateo Avenue to the west, Huntington Avenue to the north and east, and Angus Avenue to the south. The site is developed with a combination of six separate buildings connected through openings that comprise the Artichoke Joe's Casino and restaurant and a surface parking lot which is associated with the use. On sheet A 2.1 in the drawing, you can see the delineation of the six different buildings that comprise the casino complex. The subject building that we're dealing with is the furthest north and it's the kitchen building and this was constructed circa 1935. The casino and restaurant complex in total occupy 30, over 39,000 square feet of floor area and there are 446 parking spaces associated with the use, both on and off-site. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing kitchen building at the north end of the site and construct a first and second floor addition that would give the buildings that comprise the Artichoke Joe's Casino a more architecturally unified appearance. The addition, as I said, would add 1,211 square feet on the ground floor and about 700 square feet in a storage room on the second floor. The program space would add, would enlarge the kitchen, create a cold and dry storage rooms near the, and, near the loading dock and add a lactate room. A rounded corner element that is clad in brick veneer would accent the northwest corner of the building and anchor the development on San Mateo Avenue. The student, the new storage rooms would replace three existing metal shipping containers located on the site and a fourth shipping container which is located in the, in the parking lot. The addition will be topped off with a tall rooftop parapet that would screen the rooftop mechanical equipment that you see on the building today. And then along the San Mateo Avenue frontage of the building, they would have a bunch of windows, faux windows, to add some architectural interest to the building and give it more of a pedestrian scale. And then again, at the second floor, there would be a storage room that's about 700 square feet. And so, the project would include a new canopy over the loading area, which is a little bit further east at the back of the building there on the north side. Currently, we talked about the shipping containers. So it's important to know that the project would not alter the historic portions of the building. There is one portion of the building that you'll see there that was constructed near the turn of the century. That portion of the building is not being altered as part of this project. The project would not increase the size of the restaurant, or wouldn't increase patron capacity at that restaurant, nor would it increase the patron capacity of the casino floor. So there's no, no tables being added or anything like that. This addition is solely to increase the size of the kitchen area that's associated with the casino and make it more functional. So all of the exterior modifications are consistent with a 2017 remodel that was done to the building and so it's meant to kind of make the, the complex look a little bit more holistic architecturally. One of the big benefits of the project, as I said before, is the increased parapets along the north side of the building. And what that would do is, right now, as you drive in from the north, north, southbound direction, excuse me, from the north into downtown, you can see a lot of mechanical equipment on the roofs of those buildings and, so it's not really the best entrance to downtown, so this project would help rectify that. It gives you some nice tall parapets there and so that you don't see that, it's not the first thing you see when you drive into the, to the downtown. Another benefit of the project are the proposed improvements to the San Mateo elevation. What they're planning to do with those windows, those faux windows that I spoke about, is they're looking to put exhibits in them. So we, so, because the program of the actual casino and the restaurant doesn't lend itself to actually putting glazed windows on the outside, so to try to add some interest, and right now it's just a blank wall, is to have these faux windows in there and then put exhibits in them. There's a small parking lot adjacent to this side of the building and that, so staff went out to the site and kind of assessed the condition of that parking lot. The parking lot is in need of some repair and so we are recommending that that be, through a condition of approval on the project, be updated or resurfaced and restriped as part of this project. The landscape, though, we found out, we found to be in good condition. We went to the ARC meeting in March and there was some feedback we got from the ARC members as well. One of the things was to potentially come up with a better looking fence on that side of the building. If you look in some of the photos, you'll see a chain link fence there. So we do have a condition of approval and as I, as I recall, the applicant was amenable to it and that would to be, replace that chain link fence with a more decorative fence. Other things that came out of the ARC meeting, they agreed with staff to update the parking lot and that included not only the resurfacing and restriping, but also there's a number of signage that's, that's placed in buckets and so we wanted to see that properly put in the ground. And then the big thing that came out was regarding the design. They wanted to see some, continue that some of the dental features that you see on the previous portion of the building, which was done in 2017, kind of continue through to this particular addition. And then also explore squaring off the rounded corner element. Some didn't think that it maybe blended well with the existing complex and the architecture of that complex. So what you'll have in your packet today is a number of different schemes that the architect came up with to try to address those concerns from the ARC. So we are looking for your feedback on that here today. And then he'll go into further detail to kind of describe those different schemes to you. I believe it's attached to the staff report as Exhibit E and there's, I think, six different Now I just want to go over a couple of the unique conditions of approval that you'll see attached to the staff report. Condition number nine talks about the faux windows and we want to make sure that those are properly maintained for the life of the project and not just simply put something in there and let it deteriorate and whatnot. So we want to make sure that they're cleaned and that the exhibits are changed out periodically when they need to be changed out. And then there's condition of approval number 15, which talks about the storage structures that we had, had been accumulated on the site. There was four of them and so in the future, to avoid that situation, we would like them to engage the department staff and get approval from the director prior to installing those on the site. Overall, staff finds the proposed exterior modifications would be architecturally consistent with the alterations that were made to the casino in 2017 and will give the overall complex a more unified architectural theme. Furthermore, because of the project's ability to strengthen an existing downtown business and transform the northern entrance to downtown San Bruno, staff is recommending approval of the project based upon findings 1 through 8 in the staff report and conditions of approval 1 through 31 in the staff report. And we all, again, are looking for commission direction on the preferred corner element treatment per the different alternatives that are provided as Exhibit E. This concludes my staff presentation and available for any question or comment.
Any questions from the commission?
I have a couple of things there. First of all, the item is listed on the, the package as 5A, it should be 4A, it's a very minor thing. But I'm delighted to see that the storage containers will be gone. It's a great move. I think the, the new kitchen and storage will be easier for the staff and also having the storage on-site will make life a lot easier, I'm sure, for the staff. I like the high parapets concealing the unsightly equipment. I also like the faux windows at street level to give some interest to passersby. I would like to see, one thing, I would like to see is two doors added to the staff restrooms, between the staff restrooms and the kitchen for the food preparation area, because basically the, the staff restrooms are open onto the same space as the kitchen, which I don't, I don't think it's very hygienic, that's my own opinion. I agree with relocating the backflow device, it's pretty ugly where it is. And I have one question on a condition there that perhaps you could answer for me. One of the condition is the cornice design shall support a ladder and a 330 pound load, fire officer carrying 80 pounds of equipment. How do you achieve this requirement? Because most of these moldings, as far as I know, are made from styrofoam with a cementitious coating. That's what I've seen up usually and they're very prone to damage, so I'm wondering how that would be overcome.
Thank you. See if I can attempt to answer your question regarding that. So that question came from the fire department and what they're looking for is to make sure that the actual parapet itself, the parapet structure, is able to support the ladder as opposed to the, what I think, what I think you're talking about might be the detail, but the, that's attached to the parapet, but the parapet itself is what they're looking for to be able to support that ladder.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. The, the space that's in addition to, so that it would be 1,211 square feet of space on the first floor that's being added, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I was just at Artichoke Joe's on this past week after reading this and what is the traditional requirement for parking when a business adds another 1,211 square feet in downtown? Because I'll say I was there very early in the morning and the parking lot was full.
Oh yeah. Well, the, the unique thing about this business is that they actually own off-site parking. And so I, when I did the calculations, they have 446 spaces in total and that is a little bit above with the addition what, what they would be required to have for that use.
Okay, and there, I'm seeing in the packet, they're not expecting more, well, actually let me out, maybe, maybe the applicant might want to come up and I have a question maybe for the applicant as to the traffic that they're expecting by this expansion?
Sure. Could we, are we going to let the applicant do his presentation as well?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I've got an easel that I wanted to put this up real quick.
So quickly, I'm Dennis Sammett, the CEO, president, if that's what you want to call it, in here of Artichoke Joe's and my architect is Steve Leslie, so I'll let him present, but in case you had any questions for me of what's happening company-wise, where we're going, et cetera, I'm here to answer all questions to the best of my ability. But I'll let Mr. Leslie take it, he's the knowledgeable one. Thank you.
I forgot how far back this was, I would have done triple the size, but what I'll do is I'll probably explain them and then pass it and give it, uh-oh. I'll give it to Jerry to pass around and you guys can look at it up close and personal. Thank goodness they're made out of foam. No one's going to get hurt. Stephen Leslie, I'm an architect, worked for Artichoke Joe's Casino. I guess I'll, should I start answering questions or maybe, I mean, Michael Smith explained pretty well what the program, there's not much for me to add to that. He, he covered, you know, why we're doing this, this remodel and addition. He did mention the kitchen was built in 1935. It is, there are two working kitchens there, there's an Asian side and an American side of the kitchen, so it's, it's very crowded and we've been looking for new space for a long time and so we're adding a little space to the kitchen. The container bins that hold a lot of the storage are deteriorating and we need to replace those, so we wanted to replace that with a real building. And then we're doing a storage for the kitchen. And then the loading dock, which is in connection to the kitchen and the storage bin, we're going to be putting a canopy, so right now they go out into the rain to get to the storage and go back and it's just, you know, it's, it's just not a good situation. So with that, we also had the great opportunity to raise the parapets to hide the mechanical. I've been working for Artichoke Joe's for 29 years now and it's always bothered me that when you go into downtown San Bruno, the first thing you see is mechanical equipment on the building and so this is a wonderful opportunity to cover that up, make a nice entry to downtown. Our tower design is kind of, in a way, similar and mimicking and mirroring the tower design that's going on the south end of San Mateo Avenue. You see that brick tower and so this would be kind of like two anchor points or bookends, we feel, to the downtown. Kind of a nice little metaphor issue there. As far as we responded to the ARC, as Michael Smith said, they weren't quite sure. We had a round tower initially, I'm not sure if that's in your packet, but they asked for, to see if we can explore a square tower and different visual things on that and I will pass this as we go. This is just another look at, as if you're on, oh, we won't build it upside down. That's just another view looking more on San Mateo Avenue. I, I assume your packets, I don't know if they're, if you have these, but, and I don't know if they're in color, but I have six different versions of this. Scheme A is what I have on the top page because, oh, they're all upside down. That's right, they fell, I forgot they all fell.
But for the commission, they are in your packet, so these are a little bit bigger and on boards, but they are included in the packet.
Yeah, I'll pass these around, but I have scheme A, B, C, D, E, and, and all the way to F. And so the, the first four are different looks of the square tower. I just played with moldings and colors of canopy and such. One has brick on the bottom and stucco on top. This one is the, the original round tower that we had shown in the ARC with the addition of bringing the dentals around. Originally, the dentals didn't come all the way around and some of the faux windows before were, were just trimmed, so this is an embellished version of what they saw in ARC. And I'll pass those around. In answer to one of your questions, your question was, yours was a restroom one.
Yeah.
And you're, so I'm not sure what you mean, when you look, the only restroom, the restroom you might be seeing that says employee restroom, is that the one?
Yes, that's correct.
So that, that is for kitchen employees?
Right.
Yeah.
But I just think that, you know, between the door into the restroom and the kitchen area, there should be a break. There should, it, it's not a big thing to add a door to the kitchen, into the kitchen and also into the food prep area.
Yeah, actually you go through a number of doorways and passages and you have to turn a corner even get to the restrooms. I mean, to add a door would just be inefficiency if employees are coming back and forth constantly, so that door would just be slamming back and forth. But it's, it's out of the way and it's off on another corridor all by itself, so it's been working pretty good for many, many, many years. I'm not sure what you're suggesting, but a, a door would be pretty inconvenient to the workers, but we can, that's what you mean.
It could be a swing door that'd be easy to get in and out through.
Could be.
It's just that I think there should be a break between the, that's my own personal view. There should be a break between the restroom and the food prep, the kitchen food prep areas, that's all.
Okay, alright. Well, we'll look at that. But it is down a different corridor too, so it's.
Yes, I realize.
So when they go from food, food prep to the kitchen, they actually don't even go past the restrooms because it's down another corridor.
Right.
And then my question was linked to the expected traffic or increased traffic that you may have and whether Artichoke Joe's may be expecting.
No. All we're doing is just increasing the size of the kitchen and adding storage that we already have, so the actual kitchen addition portion is only a couple hundred square feet. It's pretty, kind of insignificant. So we're not adding any new employees, they're, they're just not going to be all over each other. Right now we have two kitchens that are, they're.
Very small.
We actually submitted pictures and I took pictures of, and it wasn't even the busy time and if, if you've got a chance to see those, it's employees all over each other, passing each other, trying to, you know, get to their cook line and, so this is just going to alleviate what we already have as a crowded condition and replace the storage bins that are deteriorating and the loading dock that is deteriorating. So we're not adding any new employees and no new added traffic.
Okay.
However, we'd love to have more traffic and more people come.
Yeah, so that's a good segue to, is there any plan for more parking?
We, you know, we have, that's a good question. We actually had approval years ago from Planning Department to do a parking garage and we did studies of the parking garage and that south parking lot, I mean, if we had the whole block, this is our dream, our dream would be have that whole 600 block. We would rebuild all of the retail along San Mateo Avenue, you know, new retail buildings and then our parking lot would go over it. And that worked out well with the parking layout and we can go three or four levels up and we had it tiered back, so it wouldn't be like in your face straight up. And that worked very well to the cost per dollars and how many cars we're going to get. And we are exploring that about the time Bart decided to come through and that disrupted everything for a while. And then Caltrain came through and disrupted everything for a while. So it still is in the, kind of the planning stages, but that's our dream because that way we can utilize that whole area. Right now, obviously, we don't own the strip on San Mateo Avenue, so we don't have the air rights above them, which would be, but I thought it'd be a win-win if we did, we can rebuild, you know, brand new, lower level retail and apartment above. So I don't know if that really answered your question, it isn't our plans.
Okay, thank you.
But we're not submitting that tomorrow.
Understood, thank you. And are there any other questions from Phillip?
Through the chair. This is just more a matter of curiosity than anything. So what are you going to do for food service during the time that this is going to be constructed? Is there a plan in place for that?
There is, because that's a big issue for us. We have a couple of options we're looking at. We looked at, you can actually rent portable kitchens, they come in a portable building and we already, we would need two of them, they're like, they're 20 by 40 and we would put them in that parking lot that's next to the employee lounge, you know, where that wrought iron fence is, so that'd be temporary. The other thing we looked at, which was even, was you can get a, a real portable kitchen that's on wheels and they told us if you buy it, you can actually sell them back for the same price that you buy it for, so that's a viable thing too. It's a big kitchen truck that you can use. So we looked at both of those options and one of those we'll, we'll use.
Okay.
And then we'll do a temporary access that's kind of in the back, because Artichoke Joe's is that L shape, so in the corner, you wouldn't see it from the street, but over in the corner, we would do a temporary access for the kitchen. in the corner, we would do a temporary access for the kitchen staff to go through and deliver the food and still get to the dining room. But, well, probably, and we can show that in the next, you know, phase.
That was more just a curiosity than...
Yeah, but that is, we did think of that. That was a big issue to us, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to comment on that really quickly, because it's not really part of the project in front of you right now, and so I just wanted to make clear that, I'm glad you asked the question, because it's not something I had, I had thought of in my review, but now that I'm hearing the answer, that would need to come back as a, as a TUP for that, for that kind of approval, to have that temporary structure out in the parking lot for a certain set duration.
Okay. And then I had one last question. On these different schemes, which is the one that you guys preferred the most?
The one that I, the neat, the embellished one, and the one that's on the front cover, Scheme A. I put Scheme A on front for a reason, and also, if you look at the embellished renderings, it's Scheme A. The, the other renderings is my out-of-the-box CAD program, and then I went to a professional render that did the one with the cars and the neat-looking sky. That'd take me forever. So, that's Scheme A. So that, that was my preferred. So I do like, so the suggestion of ARC from the round to the square, after we're doing the square, I do like the square. I know, I, I don't know if you guys don't, but...
Does that fit?
I tried to bring a no-long answer here, so if you guys said, hey, we love C, I'm okay with any of them, but you asked me which one I preferred, but I'd be, if you guys said C, B, D, or F, I'd say, fine.
Is there a difference to you on having a curved space versus a square one, as far as the way you're gonna line up your kitchen on the inside?
You know, it, it was very minimal. If you were, unfortunately, you don't have what ARC saw, but there's that little indentation, and one was square and one was round. Actually, the square one turned out to be a little bit more square footage, you know, like maybe four square feet, just because it's squared out instead of a round. But it was very, very minimal difference in footprint.
Okay. Thank you.
But I do like this square.
I just want to ask staff, would staff like the commission to recommend one as well, as a favorite?
Yes, it would, it is preferable that we come out of the meeting today with what's one scheme to move forward with, so that we, so that everyone's clear about what, what gets constructed.
So with that said, I'm gonna ask maybe the ARC to start, because you've seen this and you've seen how it has evolved.
Through the chair. I would like to thank the applicant for being very flexible and responsive, and providing several good-looking alternatives, although, like you, I prefer the, as soon as I went through the six options, I knew that that was, that option A was the one that best fit what we had discussed. And I think the, the addition of the, the dental detail around the, the cornices really helps. And I would also like to thank Commissioner Lathene for having the really good eye that that, that suggested those improvements.
Put a plaque with their name on it.
Through the chair. Thank you, it was, it was really fun to meet with you at the ARC, and, and thank you for entertaining my idea of squaring the, the tower off. I'm delighted by it, I think it looks great, and I'm really happy that, that you're excited about it, too.
I am, I am.
And I like A and I like B. If anybody were moved to do B, I might make the upper window longer to compensate for the loss of the dental detail, but I, I like both of them very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Through the chair. I had the benefit of actually being at that ARC meeting as a resident, so I, I got a sneak preview of, of, of this. I do prefer A, I think it looks great. I think, I echo what was said earlier about this really transforming the entrance to downtown, which sorely needs it. Not just, not just because of Artichoke Joe's, but, you know, the entirety of the, of downtown needs this, this type of facelift, and this is a great, great start to that, and so, I would, I would support option A.
Great, thank you.
And the project.
Thank you. Can I invite the, our other two commissioners, if you have any preferences?
One small point I have, could we have black pointing to the bricks instead of white? I think it looks much more subtle.
Black?
Pointing between the bricks.
Oh, in the outlines?
Yeah, I don't like the white pointing.
I can do a rendering of that and see how that looks.
I, I think, you know, I think it always looks better with black pointing, or even a dark gray. But anyway, it's a preference, personal choice.
Through the chair, you know, are we talking like a colored mortar?
Yeah, I'd have to look, visualizing it, doing, I mean, you wouldn't see the individual bricks. I like seeing the individual bricks with the white, really accenting it. With the black, it would certainly be more of a blended block, but if you want me to show one to staff, I can certainly do a rendering of that. I'd prefer the white, but it probably, in the real world, won't end up as white as it looks on the rendering.
Yeah.
So, it's pretty, but...
Commissioner Bisari, any comments?
Yeah, I, because the other building at the other end of the block, or the other end of the street that you're bookending is round, the scheme D caught my eye. But now that I sit back and look at the entirety of the project, the building has a lot more square lines than the other building, so I see where you want to go with that, to keep that architectural feature going. So I would be fine with scheme A in the big picture of things. And as long as I got the floor for a second. Michael, can we add, the use permit that's gonna need to come forward, can we add that to this project tonight to save time, or no?
No, we can't, unfortunately. There, there's separate findings that need to be met for, for a TUP, which are not before you today. So, we would need to bring that to you separately.
Great, thank you.
Great, so I, I wanted to thank the applicant, I appreciate the investment in the downtown. It's really a great time right now to be in downtown, and this is gonna be, you know, like everybody has said so far, I want to echo that, between El Camino and San Mateo Avenue, and now this side facing Artichoke Joe's, I think it's just gonna be a great entrance into San Mateo Avenue, and it's gonna show the change that's happening, so thank you for that. I also prefer Scheme A, and I have to say, I do like the white. I think it gives it a really clean, crisp look. And so I'm not sure if staff, should we, in the recommendation, would you prefer that we also have a color, or just a scheme and you will play with the color with the applicant? How detailed would you like the recommendation and the approval?
Well, if there is consistency to just evaluate the use of the color, we can look at that more, and that's typically something that we could approve at the staff level, but it would be nice if there's just clear direction to either examine that or not, just because you, you've weighed, you've weighed that option. But we will need a condition that selects the specific scheme, so I think I heard there was a preference, though not complete consensus around Scheme A. Is that correct?
That's what I'm hearing as well.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion in, in terms of choosing the alternative at, at this point?
Yeah, let me just jot some notes down about a new condition, and then motion, let me know, and we, I will read that into the record, and then we'll type it into the minutes and add it into the condition.
Okay. Would you like to motion?
If Director Darcy is ready, Director Smith is ready?
Oh, you're, I can, sorry, I can probably be on the fly. I'll try to make the motion, and then, and then I'll read the proposal.
And I want to preamble that by saying I will be selfish when, go with my own preference, but if there's a friendly amendment, that's totally kosher. So I would like to motion that we approve Scheme A as presented with the, with the color scheme indicated, in, at least in its general lines, as our chosen alternative.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? No, any abstentions? Okay, thank you, the ayes carry the motion. And then the next step, then?
So, the condition of approval that we'll add to confirm your action here will be to be a newly numbered condition of approval that will say, "The final building permit plans submitted to the city for the building permit for construction shall be consistent with Exhibit E, Scheme A, attached to the Planning Commission staff report on April 6, 2019, with the color scheme. The plans shall examine the use of black grouting in the brick, but final approval of that shall be subject to the review of the Community Economic Development Director at the Building Permit Review Phase." Thank you.
Great, thank you. We don't need to, to vote on that, though, that's already in the record.
Correct, yes.
I just want to confirm that. Okay, great, so thank you to the applicant and the owner, thank you so much. The next, let me see, the next area for discussion is the city staff discussion, and I'll let Director Smith take that away.
Great, so thank you, so, oh, thank you. I want to give an update on the exciting plan that we've been working on, and you've been working on, too, the San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan. And I wanted to mention that the Planning Commission is tentatively scheduled to hold the special meeting on May 7th. It will start at the regular time at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, and will be a similar meeting to this, and will be televised and open to the public, with public comment. I have confirmed that, as of right now, we have the, exactly the required quorum. We have four of seven, with Chair Mason confirmed, Vice Chair Legasse confirmed, Commissioner Lathene confirmed, and Commissioner Morgan confirmed. The other commissioners are excused and absent, and I would welcome them to review the packet, and also provide me with any comments in advance of the meeting that either myself or the chair can read into the record, and I, because I know they've been heavily involved in that plan and attended meetings, and this is a critical meeting. The purpose of this specific meeting is for the city Streetscape Plan and staff to present the preliminary draft San Mateo Avenue Streetscape Plan, and also to report back on the stakeholder and community input to date. Like you know, we've had the workshop, the pop-up community workshop, which was very well-attended on a Saturday, and the stakeholder meetings, which weren't attended by you, but we got some really great input from key stakeholders in the community. In case you're wondering, why isn't it here tonight? It just wasn't ready, we just had that community workshop, but we want to keep this moving, it's a council and commission priority, it's also a city priority, bless you.
Thank you.
So, it's being prepared, and May 7th is a really important meeting to get your input, you're the only city commission that's reviewing it, so this won't go to the city council, for example, for their, also their review and input, they've delegated that review to you, so this is very important. And we want to hold it on May 7th, so that we can return to a stakeholder meeting, that second stakeholder meeting will follow right on the heels of the meeting on May 8th, tentatively, and then a community meeting, and this will be sort of the big community meeting that will be on a weekday at 7:00 PM here at the Senior Center, and that is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, May 22nd at 7:00 PM. So, if all of this lines up, our goal is to bring it back to the commission a final time for a vote on the final plan, and then a city council meeting to accept the plan. And right now, we're targeting June and July for those, so, trying to keep this on schedule. We've posted a lot on the project webpage, so you can always check there, but we are really looking forward to the May 7th meeting to get that input from you. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the Streetscape Plan.
Any questions? I did have, I just wanted to ask if the, when I saw the Streetscape Plan, it didn't, I know that the city doesn't own it, but technically, it's kind of visually part of the Streetscape. If there's any work being done on the Caltrain station, it's quite an eyesore.
So I don't know of any work, right now, it's separately owned. I do know we're focusing on Posey Park and the fountains, which, as you know, are no longer fountains, and they failed, and so we're working on that.
Okay, okay, so the fountains are the city's property?
Correct, yeah, that little Posey Plaza is the city property, Posey Park, sorry.
Posey Park, yeah.
Yeah, and we have specifically asked the consultants to focus on that and solve the issue with the fountains.
Okay. And just thank you, I attended the pop-up event, and it was really well-attended, there were, I was talking to owners of businesses, there were a lot of residents, and I thought it was well facilitated as well, in the way that you were asking people to identify what they liked, what they'd like to see, so thank you for that.
Thank you, so I, we will share the feedback from that event with you. I think it's really important that you sort of read that, so that you can capture what the community input was, and we would welcome anyone to attend the Planning Commission meeting or the community workshop, too, to give us more feedback. We've been trying to experiment, or bring in some different community engagement ideas, and this is a great example with the workshop and the community pop-up of, of being a little more creative, and trying, and, and trying to capture a different audience, and so it's good to hear that feedback. And we also have the project website and the survey, so you'll see the survey results, too, and we've gotten a lot of responses with that. But now's the chance, if anyone else wants to do the survey, I think it might still be open, but we're welcome to getting any more input.
Thank you. And then the May 16th Architectural Review Committee members?
Okay, yes, we are looking for members for the May 16th Architectural Review Committee. Great, we have a new, we have two commissioner, new commissioners who want to volunteer, so I have Commissioner Hamilton, and I have Commissioner Morgan, and Commissioner Bisari.
There you go.
Good? Well, it's always nice to have a backup, just in case.
We were all looking at our calendars, and they volunteered so quickly.
It went too fast, yeah. But May is a busy month now, with, now you have potentially four, or five meetings.
Okay. Does anybody want to be a backup?
I would be happy to act as backup, I was just checking that I was here.
Okay, great, Vice Chair Legasse. And I should add that on May 7th, Vice Chair Legasse and Commissioner Lathene and I will be at a meeting on the Recreation Aquag Center, so we will rush over here, we will have to miss maybe a tiny bit of that meeting, but we will, we will, we will make it. So thank you to the both of you for double booking yourselves to make the May 7th meeting.
Through the chair, just a question, is the Architectural Review Committee is in City Hall, I believe, is it? Yep?
Yes, the, the Architectural Review Committee meetings take place at 6, 6:00 PM in Room 115 in City Hall.
6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so we'll move on to Section 5B, the Planning Commission Discussion. Does any, do any of the commissioners have anything to say, or to, any questions, comments?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome our newest commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Hope you're having fun.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you very much, I look forward to working with you all.
Very good.
And a reminder that we also have the, the opportunity to, to attend in San Mateo at the library, a presentation, this time I think it's on housing, and they've been very, very welcoming and very interesting to, to mingle with the other commissioners from other departments. Is there, is there anybody, I, I'm, do, I do worry about the issue of quorum, and so I wanted to check if anybody else was going, so that we don't find ourselves accidentally in a, in a position of conflict of interest.
I'm going.
Okay.
I'm going, but if we're not, I don't think it would be a conflict even if all seven of us went, because we're not talking about anything in, in San Bruno, correct?
No, but we... No.
It would be, it would be general, just talking about, learning about housing.
Yeah.
It is in general.
If we do that, then we just have to take, you know, the precaution to not have the appearance of conflict of interest, for example, not sitting together to...
Yeah, they did a good job with that, the last one. They split us all up, and we, I didn't even know you were there until you already left, so...
Great, thank you. I just had two questions. One is, I heard, I watched on the city council meeting, the Housing Element report that was given, and I was wondering if that report could be given to the Planning Commission as well?
So I can't, since this isn't on the agenda, I can't respond and confirm that, but if you send me an email separately as a help, I can respond to that.
Okay. And then my other question is, when would we expect, it's been quite a few months in update on the Aquatic Center?
So I can put this on the next agenda and give you an update, but I can say, because it was publicly advertised and distributed, at the last city council meeting last week, there was that presentation, which should be up on YouTube right now, so for everyone watching, if that's publicly accessible, and there was a presentation made that and had a lot of great information, so, but I will give a more detailed update the next meeting in May.
Okay, great.
Just through the chair, I wanted to check with Director Smith whether it was, it would be appropriate for Commissioner Lethine and I to give our impressions, since we do sit on behalf of the Planning Commission on the Advisory Committee meetings.
So I'll check, not right now, but at the next meeting, and I'll just check with the city attorney. I think if it's on the agenda, and we, also if we give the opportunity for the public to be aware of that, then we could have that discussion, or your comments in my report.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I also wanted to welcome our new commissioner, but Commissioner Biassati beat me to it, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
We have a lot of work to do this year, so thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It is 7:58 PM. Have a good night.